Good evening, welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. We are being recorded and broadcast on W A C A T V and we thank them for that. For our meeting tonight, we have two significant items of business. The first is four thirty-three Chestnut Street. This is part of the Warren property that the town owns. There's an A and R and a scenic road permit that we're going to be discussing for that. And then after that, we have a continued public hearing for eighty-one West Union Street Phase Two. They've given us some significant changes in the plans and so we'll be talking about that. And then let me double check. We may have a discussion of fees and bylaws, but that'll be pretty much it for this meeting. Some people may have heard there's a submission for a new apartment building on Alden Street. And there was a mix-up in the application which led to the wrong of Butters being notified, which led to having to re-advertise that hearing. So that will be at the first planning board meeting in March. So if people are interested in that, that's the time to show up for that. With that said, let's start on four thirty-three Chestnut Street. We'll start with the scenic road application. And so let me read the public hearing announcement. In accordance with provisions of the Ashland Scenic Road Bylaw, the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty at seven fifteen P M in the Ashland Town Hall, one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass. On the petition of the Town of Ashland for approval of a scenic roads opening application in accordance with Chapter forty, Section fifteen C of the Massachusetts General Laws and Chapter two forty-nine, Section twenty of the Ashland Town Code. The Town of Ashland is applying for a new proposed road opening curb cut along Chestnut Street in the vicinity of the existing structure identified as four thirty-three Chestnut Street. The project will grant ingress and egress for the adjacent parcel. All existing stones from the removed section of wall are proposed to be reused to create a flared entrance on both sides of the driveway. And for people keeping score, I believe four thirty-three Chestnut is the old Warren House, the White House that Henry Warren lived in on the...
The Hall, Yago Hall House.
Okay, why don't you come and let me know since you know what's going on and are representing the town on this?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's David Foster, I'm here just representing the town in regards to both the scenic hearing and the A and R plan. I was, we did a little, I was gonna go the other way, but that's okay. The scenic road opening is just opening a wall section and flaring it out. It will be taking twelve feet of the wall, dividing it in half, and flaring the rocks to the left and right-hand side to put access to the barn which is behind four thirty-three Chestnut Street, which is owned and operated by the Framingham State College. Because of the fact that we are doing the A and R beforehand, the right-of-way was on the driveway of four thirty-three Chestnut Street to go to the barn. The people who are purchasing the property felt that they didn't want it on there. So what we did was, we did a land swap. And in doing that land swap, we needed to give them access back to their barn. So we're just going down the road, just a few feet, taking the wall, opening it up, putting a little bit of grade so it goes down smoothly, and giving them access to the back of the barn.
Is this intended to be a paved access?
No.
So Peter, Matt, your town planner, so Mr. Foster has supported the application with a few pictures. The first would be the existing stone wall, looking from the west, the east, and also from the south. In the picture of the stone wall looking to the east, you can see the red barn in the rear of the property. And so the new, the new proposed curb cut would open up access to that red barn. And then the second sheet here is a application which was actually approved by the planning board under the scenic road bylaw, which allowed a homeowner to open up a historical stone wall. Here you can see the, due to the grading, the homeowner in the, actually in all three pictures, did create a retaining wall which then entered into the existing historical stone wall. However, you can see that the stone wall, some of the historical stone wall, stone wall was actually used in that kind of development to make that transition look fairly smooth. But for this project, it would be using the existing stone walls, there'd be no new wall, new rocks used in the flare, and it would just be this one entrance.
Any questions from the board to start?
So just looking at the photo, it does look like you've got, there's some, there's some grade considerations going through this section and down. I, you know, I'd love to see and understand like the intended path of the driveway, like how they're gonna deal with that grade, how they're gonna do that. As well as understand, I understand the town is selling this house, but like what, what's it, I just, this is a... I don't know, I'd like to understand with the existing driveway, like what this would look like at the end. I get the concept, like opening the wall, and it sounds pretty straightforward in terms of the rocks and intended usage, but like what are, what is this gonna look like? And how's it gonna play into the house, you're gonna have kind of two driveways there?
So yeah, you would have two driveways, it would be the existing driveway for the existing house at four thirty-three, and then we're creating a second means of ingress and egress. Really so for Framingham State, who's actually the owner of the barn, to access and use that barn facility without traversing the property at four thirty-three. Obviously, the grade will have to be brought up to allow for that ease, that transition from the roadway. However, it will be dirt and gravel, and it will be kind of cohesive with the existing terrain. It will not be paved, to my knowledge, and please, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, Framingham State uses the barn for storage of, uh, storage of, you know, facilities, tractors, lawnmowers. And so it will be, I would say, minimal, you know, be of use from Framingham State staff to their equipment for the fields.
What about the existing driveway that's next to the house that goes straight back to the barn and has this kind of large paved slash gravel space? Like what's the plan, is it gonna be closed up, what's the...
I mean, I was hoping to do this the other way around, to go through the A and R first, because if you look, if you, what it is was is a land swap.
I understand what we're trying to do.
And we swapped it over, and we took, we gave the land back to Framingham State for land in the back. And what it is, is now the easement is back on to Framingham State's property. And the driveway that's paved, that's gonna be the driveway for the house. It's just taking the easement off the property.
Yeah, I, I get fully what we're doing, I get the why, no question, there's no issues with, I get it. I'm just trying to understand aesthetically, like what's it gonna look like? Like there's a lot of the time and attention to this district. You know, I'm just trying to look through and say, okay, how's it look when we're done? Is what I'm trying to get at. I understand that this is an A and R.
Are you, so you're asking, Joe, really in consideration, is the existing driveway to the barn going to be removed? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I guess, maybe there's no answer to it at this point, so...
Yeah, I, I don't know if Framingham State or if there's any future plans.
The existing easement is going to be removed from, on the house property, yes.
Right, but is the, the, right now, it's a driveway. Are they actually gonna go in and physically like clear that and plant grass or something there? So that there's no, so you can't drive back to the barn?
Right, right here, where this arrow is pointing, it shows the remains of the existing driveway as it kind of goes to the barn today.
Yes.
So I get clearly what we're doing, I get why we're doing it. I'm just trying to get at what's gonna happen with that there, are they gonna grass that, are they gonna try to dress that up?
That's gonna be whoever purchased, the purchase of the owner of the property will take care of that driveway and probably make it part of the driveway to the existing facility.
The existing home?
Home.
Yeah, yeah. So I think the town, so to answer your question, Joe, the town, the town has no plans to cut off and to grass that area. Really, it's gonna be up to the owner of the new house to, to terminate the driveway. And really, and leave it for parking. But at this point, we're looked at, you know, Framingham State is looking for its own ingress and egress to the barn facility.
I, I get what we're trying to do, I understand, yep, so, okay.
Um, I don't see anything here saying what the width of the opening will be for the new opening.
It'd be twelve feet. If I lift that off, I'm sorry, it's a twelve-foot. So where the wall is, you would take the twelve feet, you'd split it in half at the six-foot mark. You'd take the walls on each side and just flaring them, stacking them to make the sweep into the entrance.
And I see some trees there in the pictures, are you staying far enough away from the trees?
There's no trees, we're not touching, we're not touching any trees.
Okay.
Is there, is the town's founder buyer for, for the four thirty-three?
To my knowledge, yes. The, it has not, everything has not been executed regarding the transfer of the property. However, you know, the town did go through the R F P process, there is a, you know, purchaser of the property. However, this easement was one of the sticking points before the execution took place. So therefore, you know, work, Dave, David has been working between Framingham State in regards for, in representing the town, and working with the new ownership of the house to really kind of settle all these, or really, I would say tie up all these loose ends. And this is one of the formalities of the closure, and for the town to release the property. And obviously, there's gonna be a historical restriction placed upon the house of three, uh, four thirty-three that was part of the R F P process, and the house will be reconstructed or renovated in regards to that historical preservation.
So on the plan diagram, just the, the red line is indicating what the new property line will be, right?
That's correct.
So that's what it will be changed to after the A and R?
Correct, correct.
So, and I know these are very, you know, diagrammatic, will the, will the house driveway be fully within that? It looks like right now it's gonna, it looks like it's gonna cut...
Yeah, I think we're...
Flaring? No, no, I'm talking about the, at the road.
At the property line.
Yeah, so I mean, is there a, you know, is it, or doesn't it matter, I'm just saying?
I think it does.
So if it's fully within?
I feel like the A and R, it's on the A and R plan, which is in everyone's package.
And that, yeah, okay, that's, and then, what's my other question? All of the, the things that you, the twelve-foot opening, the reuse of the stones and the flare, the, the, using gravel driveway, where is that all spelled out?
It's, it can be spelled out in the planning board's system.
Okay, and the decision?
Decision, yep.
So not spelled out yet?
And just to answer your question, yes, the gravel driveway, the existing driveway four, four thirty-three is within the property.
Yeah, in the A and R plan that we'll look at later, you can see it goes, the new property line does not go into the flare out.
That's what I figured, I mean, it's when you're drawing a diagram, that's what nature of a diagram is.
Just for clarification, you know, the, the path of the new, you know, the new path to the, to the, to the barn, which Framingham State will utilize, will be twelve feet wide, stereotypical driveway. And then the flare at the roadway will take in the radius of that turn. So obviously, it'll be, you know, it could be, it would be wider than the twelve feet. However, it will, it will necessitate a twelve-foot wide driveway back to the garage, to the barn.
There's like, there's all, there's all kinds of little property issues where people's flare goes into someone else's property line, right? It happens all the time, so like, can we just avoid that here? Can we just keep with the line where the driveway already is?
Yeah.
You know, 'cause sooner or later, it's gonna pop back up again, cut off your driveway.
So the flare on the plan, yes, it's within the property line. And obviously, the new opening will all be within the frontage owned by Framingham State.
This is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who would like to comment or ask questions about this? All right, are we comfortable closing the hearing and voting on this? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes four zero. Is there a motion, let's see, what do we want for a motion on this? To grant the scenic road permit with the conditions that the, the stones be...
Yeah, the stones shall be reused.
Reused.
No trees are gonna be modified as part of it?
Unpaved driveway, gravel driveway, twelve feet wide, you know, all the things that were kind of in the descrip, the, were in the verbal description, should be in the written description.
Yes. All right, is there a motion?
To approve that with those conditions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes four zero. And since it is related to this and we've already talked about it, let's immediately go to the A and R plan for this property. Which is farther back in your folders, you can, you each have a very large copy of the plan. And here we can see, as shown in the sketch diagram that we saw previously, the exact lines where they're putting the new lot lines or taking, as opposed to the old lot lines.
Correct, so just to explain this, obviously, it's the existing dwelling at four, uh, four thirty-three Chestnut Street. Currently, this A and R plan looks to, it's theoretically a land swap concerning two thousand three hundred and twenty-six square feet, which is represented in parcel A and a parcel B. Currently, the property includes parcel B. In this A and R, we are trans, we are, I would say manipulating the property line and giving property, parcel A will be now connected to the existing dwelling at four thirty-three. And then parcel B will be part of therefore Framingham State University.
The only thing that pops into my head about this is I see at the old corner, there's a, a location pin for surveyors. And there, there's nothing about putting a new one in at the new corner. I don't know if we could require that. That, being an A and R, I assume we probably can't?
So just, they're gonna relocate?
Oh, they're gonna, oh, they're gonna relocate?
Yeah.
The pin? Okay.
That's what the, yeah, they can relocate this pin over here.
Okay.
Solves that problem?
I, I don't know, it, I don't know if that's really what that means, 'cause it says the same one on this one, rec...
Reclocate pin.
But anyway, it would be nice if a survey pin gets put in, if there's any surveyors out there as a part of this process?
I think working with Dave, Dave, David and I can reach out to the surveyor and have that completed.
I, I, I don't think within the A and R process, it's within our purview to require that, so it's a suggestion?
No, I think, I, I agree that this, that probably makes the most sense, and obviously, because this is a town application, you know, I would...
Yeah.
They survey it, don't they do that anyway? I mean, around our place, they always put the pins in when they survey it.
No, it's an extra service that you have to pay for.
Yeah, I, I know that when we do subdivisions, we require these markers. But then when the lines get changed, we often don't get new markers, so it's just a suggestion.
I'd like to transfer the question to David Foster. David, do you have any knowledge of the surveying company placing a pin at the new location?
I have not gone out there to look if there's a pin in the ground or not.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm asking if you do want the pins, to what, what, in the back corner, the front corner, where do you want the...
The new corner?
Good, any place that pins can be put in is a, is a good idea, just so for future surveying, the town's interest. The truth is, I believe it's outside of our, our scope of what we can require with an A and R. So I am, so just take it as a suggestion and do what makes sense. 'Cause the, the problem is, we, we're losing the advantage of having that pin that's back there in that back corner with the corner being moved. So it would be nice if there was still a pin there, but that's all I'm saying. And if it, if it happens, that's great, and if it doesn't happen, you know, we can't require it at this point. But for a subdivision, we would require it.
As part of this restriction that's gonna be placed on this property when it's a historical restriction, is it gonna restrict the development of this additional acreage?
Yeah, a whole new property.
In the back?
I'm not concerned about the, the switch, the, I, I, I'm not worried about parcel A and the switch for parcel B. I get the need for that as part of the driveway, I'm just saying broadly, it's a pretty large lot.
Expansive lot.
It's a very large lot, right? And, okay, put a historical restriction on the house, sure, but what's stopping somebody from really fundamentally changing?
There will be none, there will be no additional structures on the property.
As part of the restriction?
Correct. The, the existing lot, it says thirty-five thousand square feet, which I believe is the whole thing.
Yeah.
And the zoning requires thirty thousand square feet, so even though visually it looks like they could put a second house here, the lot is not large enough under zoning for them to split it into two buildable lots.
Also, it drops, it drops down. I mean, it goes a long front, a very long distance on Chestnut Street, but it drops down in a very steep angle down at that area that you're talking about.
It's a, it's a residential A zone, so you need, you do need thirty thousand square feet for an additional lot. You know, Preston is correct, that you, you know, just the square footage alone wouldn't allow a development, but the historical restriction will also be another level of protection that the town puts on the house and then, as it moves forward.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Is there a motion to endorse this plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes four zero. Do you need us to sign this now, or, or can...
No, I can, you can get it and I'll pick it up at another time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sign it at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right. Our next item of business is eighty-one West Union Street, Phase Two. This is both a special permit and a site plan review. So the applicant would, can get set up here? All right, and would the applicant like to let us know where we are today? Okay.
Nice, but I can't see him. Since the last meeting we had with you folks, we received comments both from your consultant and also started with the design review board. So taking your consultant's comments first, he pretty much signed off. He had indicated a couple things for, for your staff to consider. And Bill has had discussions with D P W and Water and the Fire Department, and I think emailed those folks, and I think you'll be getting shortly from them, kind of they're okay on the remaining issues that your consultant raised. The two issues, I guess to some extent, outstanding that the consultant raised is one in regard, one is loading. Your bylaw talks about having loading spaces for each of the buildings of commercial... Your bylaw talks about having loading spaces for each of the buildings of commercial buildings and having a loading space on the site of, I think it's twelve feet by sixty-four feet. We have provided on the plan, three areas for that to happen. Your consultant raised the question as to the space we have for loading, which is be- between Buildings One and Building Two. And his comment was, if there's a truck in there, and again, understand that that loading is for a commercial building that's less than five thousand square feet. You know, we put it in, but we don't realistically think that it necessarily needed, but we put it there. So his comment was, if there is a truck, in fact, unloading, then the four parking spaces within the residential unit in Building Two are blocked by the truck that's there. I took a look at a couple of your kind of recent decisions, the building across the street, the bagel shop over there, the decision dealing with the, um, the Pond Street site, and none of those have any loading docks. They're similar in nature in the sense that in this building there, we've got less than five thousand square feet, and most, most of those are, those buildings are four thousand square feet. So I'm assuming the board kind of accepted that for buildings of that size, you don't need it. We realistically think two loading spaces for the total square footage of commercial space we have are sufficient. We have loading, one loading space that's in the middle of the site, within this island here, and then a lot, another loading space that's next to Building Three. So again, there's one in here, you can see it outlined in one there. That we think will cover more than what's necessary in reality for the uses of the buildings, because one, both Buildings Two and Three, basically the tenants, if they want them, have loading doors that they can access through there. We don't foresee in any way, shape, or form tractor-trailer trucks coming to this site. But all intent and purposes, technically, that's what your bylaw requires. We're hoping you would suggest that only two are needed, either on the basis of the garage doors for, in Buildings Two or Three, or simply as you have for the other units, that a building of four to five thousand square feet commercial space doesn't require its own loading dock. So that's one answer we need from you folks, how you want to approach that. But again, I think consistency, I don't see us having a need for three tractor-trailer loading areas for, for this project, given the, the uses that are on it and the garage doors where they can load right into their facilities. So that's one question we need to answer too, I don't know if you want to chat about that now, or go through the whole?
Let, let's keep going.
Okay. The other issue that the consultant raised was one, the, again, as we talked about the loading dock, excuse me, the loading space that we have here, as you can see on this plan, there's two parking spaces right here that have eighteen feet to the dash line, not to the truck, but your bylaw requires twenty-four feet of backup. So this one space to that line is probably twenty-three feet, which your consultant is identifying. One of the things I looked at on that, and again, looking at other decisions you most recently did, again, kind of the mixed use across the street, the one with the bagel shop and the one at the former Marconi's site. We carry depth of spaces twenty feet, which is consistent with what the board approved for the storage facility. All those other decisions, if you look at those plans, the board approved parking spaces eighteen feet deep. So if you were to treat us in the same fashion, we could do a number of things with, with the site. Certainly eliminate that issue without having to worry about skewing that truck space, which we could do. And I think we could pick up some other areas of pedestrian access and maybe bump up this island, 'cause we could save eight feet, make that a bigger island, more grass, more everything else. So we could make some changes to the site in the nature of green space and everything else, if we were using eighteen-foot spaces rather than twenty. So again, that's a, a question that you've got to answer. And again, eighteen feet, again, is consistent with across the street, the bagel shop down here, and twelve Pond Street.
So you're talking about the depth of the spaces themselves, as opposed to the backup space behind them?
No, the backup space, we can keep at the same twenty-four, that meets it.
Okay.
But the, the spaces, again, we're showing a twenty-four feet for the actual car, whereas all those other projects you approved at eighteen.
All right, let, let's keep going?
Okay. So the other things from the viewpoint of both this board, in subsequent to the last meeting we had, or, or the last meeting we had, one of the questions that was raised was in the nature of the, the, the height of, of Building One. And we received some information from Peter in regards to other projects that the board has approved using a mansard-style roof to cut down on the height of the structure. So we've implemented this change. And this reflects the two changes, these plans reflect the two changes that we've made subsequent to the design review board, who I think generally liked this building, you know, get through their comments on it. So by changing to that mansard roof, the main structure of the building, being this, we've lowered by about eight feet from the, the peaked roof scenario that you saw last time we were here.
What are those numbers, the old numbers?
We, we lowered this from the peak roof about eight feet.
It was about forty-four, and now I think it's like thirty-seven and two, or something.
We added this element, so you got a little bit of a height there, but we added that element for a bit more architectural feature. One of the comments that the design review board had, if you look at the plans that we had given you originally, this back elevator piece had a non-arched thing. So the one change in the plan that you see here is making this consistent with that. The other issue that we addressed from the viewpoint of the design review, if you look at the old plans, there was a kind of material like this from the viewpoint of the mechanics on the top of the roof. They didn't, well, they made comments to do something a little bit different, so we've just created a, a fence scenario up there. We increased, I think, some window sizes around as well, and added some windows particularly in the back. And I think we're still talking about adding more here. But we've had a lot of windows throughout the course of the site. The other item that they asked us to take a look at was the nature of the signage. And again, we don't have any tenants for this building at this stage of the game. What we're anticipating is, at the main entries, right, right now, this four plan, if you consider this four plan, what we're figuring is that you get kind of four quadrants. Common corridor down the center, common corridor down the middle. So where we have kind of common doors, we would anticipate kind of a small directory, whatever your bylaw allows. And then where there is individual space for an individual tenant, a simple sign next to that space. So in all likelihood, again, a, a directory sign at this main door, main sign for that tenant there. This is the, the front view, again, this sticks out, I think it's roughly five feet. This tenant here, the back tenant, the sign at its entry door. And again, the, the roof piece here, the arch piece for the elevator shaft. This is the, I guess, looking at it from the wetland point of view, again, entry doors into the elevator, so signage for these two tenants, and then an, a directory sign at that main door.
Are there any street signs on this plan, just while we're talking about signs?
There's a, there's a, one standing sign, I'm told, that's already up on the site.
So that's one that they put in the front, it's for all these buildings and the street?
Yeah, there's one standing sign that's there that's been.
Yeah, it's got a four box on it.
I don't.
Three empty spaces.
For that building too?
That, that's for, one standing sign for the entire project.
Is that on this property or the other property?
It's actually in the, right now, this dash line is the common area under the condo for the storage facility, where we bumped out that piece, so that's a common space for all, and that's where the sign is. So that's in essence Building One. Again, typically we drop eight feet, address the, I think what we identified, or what were identified were concerns from the design review board. As to Building Two, they had a lot of concerns, both in Building Two and Building Three, as to the residential space. In this side, let's get a better, yeah, okay, this side is better. If you recall the old pictures, we had basically the entire building door and up and down siding types, and just basically a framed win- a framed door here, no articulation in the nature of the garage doors and just the door. So we've changed to include a lot more windows here, transoms, doors in the garage doors, transoms, again, more windows up here as well. So along the back, if you remember the back, we had four separate dormers, and, and we kind of took those and combined them into one. This is, again, the residential space in this portion of the building, again, adding more windows for all that, which is what they wanted to see. And adding, you know, more of an architectural separation, create some difference of appearance at that point in time. To create this side, which is again, behind Building One, is more of a residential view, so.
The building height is the same as it was last time?
As it was before, yep, yep. And again, that's down, I think it was fourteen, ten feet from the original version, fourteen? So. The front of the building, we switched to, to vertical siding, should have given that up and down, you know, setup look. The other ask they do is simply put signage, so what we've simply identified is kind of each tenant within that, and there's three of them, would have their signage identification over their main door. We added some, anticipate some windows in the door as well, but again, if a tenant doesn't want that visibility, we probably would not do it, or have it more shaded than anything else. Again, here's the back, rather than having four separate dormers, we've created that appearance. And added, added windows. Okay, as to Building Three, same concept from the viewpoint of signage over the doors for the thing, same concept from the viewpoint of, you know, windows within the doors. We had a transoms over the thing, we added more windows in the back, more windows on the side, that was their concern. So that's where that went. They had concern for the residential, not only in the nature of the window space within the residential space, if you remember, the back of that building has a residential space in each back corner on the second floor. It has been kind of put to us, kind of a scenario of whether that's, those are viable units. And, and they raised that as well, and, and we've had that concern as well. We didn't know if that's worthy of discussion as to whether we should keep those in that building, given the comments that have been made to us, take them out and simply leave the ten units in the other buildings. We provide parking forms to meet all the standards with them. And if we were to take them out, maybe the scenario to do is have a decision that allows them to go in if the intent or, or the market, you know, brings it forth that somebody would want one. As a way to potentially address that.
Why, why can't the design evolve to make them viable units?
Can't they, what?
Why can't the design evolve so that they become viable units?
Oh, we, we did, we, we've added the windows and we've added everything they did. They raised the comment and others have from the viewpoint of just the viability of, of the, of that use in that building.
That's only Building Three, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
That's only Building Three, is that correct?
Yes, only on Building Three.
Only Building Three.
But by viability, you mean whether or not you would find somebody who would actually want to buy them?
Yeah, or buy them, rent them or buy them.
Because?
Just you're in the way back of, you know, counting the rest of the commercial space with a lot of parking and everything else. It, it were, it was comments put to us.
No, I, I understand, I, I think building, I mean, I can read for these comments, I can, I can see that Building Three maybe hasn't had the attention as Building Two and Building One. But my first comment was like, give it some more attention, let's make these viable units, you know, so that they, maybe they're the best ones, 'cause they're in the quietest part of the site.
Yeah.
Right? So that just, it just signifies to me that maybe there's a lack of attention.
The, the architectural comments they had on those building, those units, I think we've addressed. It's just a question that, that people have put to us from the viewpoint of the viability. So I think we've addressed the, the comments from the design review, we're just finishing them up, we'll schedule back to them on the twentieth, next, next Thursday. So they were, I would assume they would then give you folks the final comments after next Thursday.
Now, you had a commercial area at the end of Building Three?
Yes.
I believe? Can, has that changed?
No. Not, not since the submission in, in January.
Okay, uh, so when I briefly saw it up here, I thought it looked different.
What happened was, before the elevation, you had, had the roof over this commercial space drop down. We just squared off the building.
Okay, so the, you kept the, the roof above, so that, that is changed in the design?
We moved the residential unit to the end of the building, rather than over what had been the roof piece here.
Okay. Yeah, the, the only thing I don't like about that is the way the stairs just stick out from the building.
Is there a way to flip that apartment, so the entrance is on the other end of it, and then the stairs could be pushed back behind the building?
This is, this is that side, this is the, the other side, there's a set of stairs that go down that side of the building. This here, you can't do, 'cause then you're blocking.
But I mean, if you, the door enters on that first, right when you get to the corner of the top.
Yep.
If they redid the plan, so the door was on the other end of the apartment, couldn't they push the stairs back down behind the thing?
We have to have headroom clearance to get up the five foot seven retaining wall, which is, if you look on the rear, there's, that stairs goes over the stairs going up to the walkway over in the back of the building.
I think there's probably bigger questions before we get into the details of head height on the stair.
Okay.
So between, before we go into that ADN requirement, you know, we can look at other bigger pictures on the buildings.
All right, do you have more to cover?
I, I think, just, uh, I think that's pretty much it, that's kind of where we were from the last time we met with you folks and your consultant. So again, we're looking for kind of guidance in the nature of the loading areas in, in the eighteen-foot depth of parking spaces.
I think that's something from my perspective, that I'd like time to look at and look at the examples that were mentioned. These drawings, I know I've been looking for them for the last few days, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but several times during that meeting, it'd be, it was mentioned that, that was obviously held on a Thursday, and it was mentioned that new drawings would be provided early the following week, since I missed that meeting, I kept looking on the website, looking for those missing drawings.
For the architectural plans?
For, for any?
The site plans haven't changed.
That's, yeah, not the site plan, for any, for any new drawings. So obviously those didn't appear until, until tonight. So I think those are things that, for I for one, I'm gonna want to review before saying, yeah, we'll reduce it to eighteen feet. You know, I'd, I'd like to review those projects, review the site in particular, review the concerns, and, and then get back to, have time to think about that consideration, so.
Yeah. Again, we had submitted the original elevations, we got comments at the last meeting, which it took us some time to, to make, particularly in regards to Building One, gave them to the design review board for last week, they made comments, and, you know, since last, whenever, when did we meet with them, Tuesday? So we had to make their changes between last Thursday and, in this week.
Yeah, I talked to them on Thursday midday, and at that point, I'm not sure if they had received drawings at that point. So it seems, I don't know if it was, I know I talked to them Thursday midday, and I don't think they had received drawings before that point, so.
Well, they hadn't received the revised drawings.
Right.
They had received the original sets, but it was only the Thursday before that we were asked to change the whole building.
I'm just leaving time, I'm just leaving time for the process here, versus like, receiving the drawings and us having time to absorb that information, study them in detail, versus getting the drawings at the last minute and then be expected to make a decision like in, in this meeting, which I think is entirely inappropriate. So there's going to need some time on these things, I do appreciate the amount of work that has gone on, I know this program, this is done in chief architect, I assume. Right, I can read it like a footprint. So, I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into, I can see things that are kind of chief architect standard. You know, when you put on a roof, it puts on this type of things, and so for those type of things, you know, it's, it doesn't stand out to other people, it stands out to me. And those are areas that I know that will be needing some tweaking in these drawings. As well as looking at the, seeing the floor plans, you know, start to develop. All these residences are going to need two means of egress through a, a door, directly to a hallway, an accessible hallway, egress hallway, and then directly to the exterior, which could be a little tricky with this kind of, with this kind of slope, so we'd like to see how those residences are working on the inside.
Yeah, just the comment, car right around the middle, but we can get you that.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be good to see how, how those things work, so, and that makes the stair kind of, you know, you start to understand if that's a, you know, is that the main stair to the house, or is that just, is that something really extraneous, you know, to really understand how all these units are working. I think also what's really necessary, and it was in the design review requirements, but it probably hasn't been done, was just to see these buildings relative to the neighboring buildings, that's a requirement on the list, or at least recommended, and so we need to see those, it's on the appendix E of the design review, design review process. So, so we want to see these buildings in context, we want to see them relative to the storage building sitting there, we want to see them relative to the residences, relative to the street, and how that all works together.
If, if I may, when, when we did 128 Main Street, they had all these renderings, and they also showed the church in the background as well, so you got, you got a lot more context of what was going on.
Well, I, I mean, these buildings are located where they're allowed to be located on the site, and, and we've been through this before, and we're not changing the locations of the buildings at this, after we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars going through designs and everything else. So these buildings and the location is how what they are. The site plan has a locust plan which depicts the location of the other buildings on the lots, adjacent to us. This, and as you can see from this, this depicts the locations of the buildings on the adjacent properties. There, 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 and there.
Yeah. Yeah, we get that, yeah.
So, I mean, we're dealing with our site.
I think, I think, I think the perspective rendering.
I'm looking for a perspective streetscape relative to the, to the adjacent structures, is what I'm looking for.
Particularly on building one.
I'm looking for all the buildings, not, not just building one. I think it's vital, I think that's vital to a part of the covenant, actually, that governs these, as part of being like something that.
I don't know what plan we would give you beyond what we've given you.
No, it's not a plan, it's, it's not a plan, it's a perspective, a section, an elevation.
There's no requirement in your bylaw for any perspective.
Applicants' process for design review, this is appendix E of the design review process, it's on page seventy-seven. Perspective, streetscape, including adjacent structures. These are vital, these are, I want this to be clear, these are vital as we start to develop our community, how buildings relate to other buildings. Right, that we don't just stick something there that doesn't have anything to do with the buildings around it. I'd like to see how this, how this has something to do with that storage structure that's now sitting there. I'd like to see it how it has something to do with the little houses that are sitting there. This is how architecture develops, this is design, right? This is design, this is the process. So this is what we're going to need in a special permit process to see these things, to have it speak for itself, that this thing is a good thing to do, especially when as a part of the covenant, I said, there was supposed, there's a line in there about being good for the future of Ashland. Right, and I think we need to see that.
We have addressed and changed the architecture based upon comments and elevations that we've received. The existing building is what it is, there's nothing we can change about that. We have been instructed to create architecture of this building that creates transition from the industrial nature of that building more towards the residential, which we think we, we've done.
I understand, what's important to understand, that as a designer, the design review process doesn't happen in, in two meetings, right? Yes, you've been working hard on it, that's great, that's exactly what should be happening, there's a lot of detail to go through. But this is the normal part of the design process, you go through it again, and you get it better, and you go through it again, and then you go again, and again, until it gets it where everyone likes it, where everyone thinks it's good. All right, so I appreciate, I very much appreciate this leap in what has been done, because the first thing we saw is, was a cartoon. Right, it wa, it wasn't a building, it was a cartoon, I can tell you exactly how many hours it probably took to do, right? Now we're starting to get into the aspects of a building, and now we start to redesign and to do that design in detail with that building. So, right, so there are.
We can put that building side by side with this one, and you're going to see a drastic difference. I don't know what you're going to achieve out of that, but we can give you that building side by side in, in projection of, of the eight nature in the, in the separation.
Who's the designer on the project?
We have some in-house people.
So are you understanding what I'm saying about the design process, is the design process is not part of a legal process? It's a design process, it's an artistic process, that's what I'm looking for. So when we're giving feedback, but like, that, hey, this works, but this still doesn't, that's part of the design process that continues to develop, that isn't done in two meetings because you answered at some checkboxes at the design review committee.
No disrespect to you, okay, I understand this is what you do for a living, we went through this entire process once.
When?
Last fall.
Different project.
Design review, everything done, okay? Then the covenant issue came up, we are still not considering it a legal document, okay? We're going through this entire process, happy to make the changes, as Peter suggested. We were asked to try to find a way to transition from what's there to what's next to it. So we said, fine, the building one that was there that was previously approved under design review and through this board.
No, building one was not approved.
Building one was the design review, we took that building to di, design review, and we had that building on these plans in front of this committee. And we were probably two or three weeks away, we had our conservation almost done, okay? And the covenant issue came up, and it's fine.
Yeah.
Not interested in getting an argument about it, we're saying, hey, let's work together, okay, let's get through this process, and let's make it better. Let's have consideration for the neighbors as being raised by the planning board. And so we made dramatic changes, we made seven, eight foot drop in the building. The building behind Mr. and Mrs. Ferris is, we dropped thirteen, twelve and a half, thirteen feet. We changed all of building one, as Peter has explained to you, from the meeting that we went to with the design review. We, they came up with some great ideas, we revised it so that we could share it with you, I'm sorry for the timing. I agree with you, yeah, you should absolutely have more time than whatever happened this afternoon for you to get it, but we were doing everything we could to get it done, so I respect what you're saying, I think absolutely you need the time, but to say that like, we're going to, we, we should have to sit here for three months and continuously evolve the, the structure, I mean, it's where it is, it's legal. We've reduced it, we've changed, I mean, building two, we've changed it dramatically according to what's required from the covenant, adding asphalt shingles, different types of siding. And then even after design review, we changed it again. And I'm not saying we don't want to make any changes, but I also want some appreciation for the amount of aggravation and stress that we've gone through, after going through this process, all the way through this once, only to drop another fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars on redoing the whole process because this covenant thing came up. And again, I'm not interested in getting an argument over it, I'm just trying to do the best I can and get the project going. And the design review board, with the exception of one person who had some comments, because it's not true that they were all happy, and we expected that she would voice her opinion on this, liked it, and they thought it was great, and I'm sure you have a different perspective because you're, this is what you do for a living, and I believe you need the time to look at it, I just hope you'll have respect also for the time that we've been spending trying to make this a better project.
I, I absolutely do, and that's why I've said several times that I can see that a lot of hours have gone into what was presented, the meeting when I wasn't here, and was presented today, a huge amount of hours, I can, I can.
The cartoon character reference, it's like, that's not cool.
No, the first one, the first one, I'm sorry, yeah, you know.
The first one, you mean that went through?
The red one.
That nobody said anything about, that one? Okay.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, if you were here, maybe we would have had some better input, that we might get right now too, which is great.
Yeah, yeah, I do, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that from this point forward, right, that there's been a great amount of changes here, and it's a great step in the right tim, right direction. But it's not done, and so continuing to say, hey, we talked to the design review, and this is what they said, and, you know, and, and as if it's a dead end, that's not a good approach to take.
I'm not saying it's a dead.
No, I know, you, no, you haven't, you haven't, but I think that's when becoming.
We were going back to them with the changes that they asked, well, we think they addressed what they have, if they have other things, then we got to deal with it.
That's right, and then it comes.
Talking about the dead end as it relates to, you know, moving the structures around.
No, I'm not interested in moving the structures around, that is not what I'm talking about at all, I'm talking about the design now of these units, that we start to look at what's working with the design changes you've made and what's still not working, and that we work on those things that aren't working. I mean, I think the building, I think building one is actually working pretty well now, I'm interested in where the two means of egress, I'm interested in how you get out of these units, it's a safety issue, it's not really in their purview here, but usually we have floor plans submitted with these things. So it's kind of assuming that those safety measures are in place. The other ones are a little, the other ones are trickier buildings, because they are trying to have a foot in each of these worlds, they, they're, they're, they're tricky. You know, I'm not saying it's, 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 it's hard to put a roof on a pizza box and make, make it look residential. That's a hard problem.
And then make that residential of two kind of transition into.
Totally, I get it, so I am appreciating the work, I'm just trying to say, let's keep going with it. So let's look at the things that aren't working, let's focus on those things, and we take another pass at those things, and we try to find those answers so that we're like, yeah, we like buildings two and three as much as we like building one, because I was shocked to see these on, on the table, frankly. Like, wow, this actually looks like, kind of, kind of looks like a building now.
Can I apologize that it took so long? That's our, that's our doing, and, you know, Peter made it clear to us that that was not a happy thing going on. For us, it was important at least to get your comments on the issues that Peter's raising as far as that loading area and the two feet, and I understand, you got, at least you're hearing it, and how we're feeling about it, and then you can take your time to think. We're not expecting you guys going to go, oh, we decided, because we just gave you this stuff however many hours ago, and I know that's not fair, and I accept responsibility for that, I'm sorry.
My goal would just to, like, in the, in the same thing that we talked about with, with twelve, twelve Pond Street, like, which is, you know, kind of my first building since I've been on, on this committee, is to, in the end, we have something that we're happy with, that the town can, you know, no one's going to be happy with anything at first, because that's the way change is, right? But that, that, but that eventually people will be happy with, right? It has the right characteristics to make people happy about it, and that's what I'm shooting for, that's the kind of relationship I want with what you guys are developing and what we're trying to do.
We've shown we're getting to that, we just need to continue that process.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like, it's just continuing the conversation, there's huge leaps that have been made, and I love, I love seeing that, that's, that's what I do, right? So, those are the things, and then the, the things that, that are rubbing, I think not only me, but other people the wrong way, are the things that then we, we need to keep working on, that we all don't like them very much. It's a trickier problem, so it's going to take a little bit more to figure it out.
And I think you probably will leave us shortcuts, given your experience. I watched the deliberation of the fusion, that old building, and I thought it was, I thought it was thoughtful, and I agree, you guys come up with a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's not my, it is not, this is not the type of work I do in my own practice, it's not my wheelhouse. But, but that said, you know, design is design, you know, so I'm happy to help when I, when I can and as is appropriate.
Thank you.
All right. As I look at this, the, the issue with the loading docks and with the parking, the normal thing is, when you have plans, you list what waivers you're looking for, so it sounds like you're asking for two waivers.
Yeah, and, but if, if the board isn't inclined to give them, there's no sense.
Well, you know, that's, that's fine, but right now, you're saying you're looking for two waivers.
Yeah.
And, um, I tend to agree that we don't need a semi for loading for the kind of businesses that would go into building one. So, so my instinct is, and that an eighteen foot parking space as opposed to twenty foot parking space, yeah, that seems reasonable to me, so, I don't know how the other board members feel, my initial reaction is that those would be acceptable.
Are those waivers that were requested under formal processes for the other three buildings, did those get formally requested? For waivers, I don't, I don't know what the process is, to be honest with you.
I don't know what was done before, I don't know, but I'm just saying that it would be, it should be stated that these are
The board approves this plan with these dimensions.
Rules and regulations say you're supposed to do X.
Okay.
The planning board has the authority to waive that, and you're, you're asking that that, in this particular context, that those be changed from, you know, twenty to eighteen and so forth, and, and that, that's fairly typical in projects of this size to have two or three waivers of things that the board often agrees to.
Yeah, and again, we would maintain the twenty-four feet behind it, so you'd still have the backup space.
Yeah, I think the backup space is more important than the, the depth of the parking space. I don't know anybody who has cars longer than eighteen feet.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I'll look at the waivers from the previous projects. But typically that would be made obviously upon the site plan.
But, you know, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, so I, you know, the other, other board members might want to think more about it, might want to.
I, I think there's more thinking to do about it, but, yeah, given the kind of, given the intended use of two and three, like, how long is an F-250? Is it eighteen feet, is it, I have no idea, I'm just saying, like, like, the cars are going to get in two and three are going to be buried, it's going to be trucks, it's going to have a tendency towards work vehicles, which are larger, right? Building one, probably more, you know, typical cars, typical, you know, so. I don't know how, I don't know how long an F-250 is, so I just throw that out there as like a.
Just to conversation sake, a typical parking space within the bylaws, it's tw, it's ten by twenty. And though, that's, that's probably the biggest parking space that is, you know, seen throughout Massachusetts and all the country. I would say, if you go to the Enatic Mall, those parking spaces are probably eighteen, nine by eighteen's.
All of Framingham standard is nine by, nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen's, and, and various other communities, they, you know, it's waived down to nine by eighteen's. As Peter said, Framingham is nine by eighteen, and that's probably a sign of the times. I think Ashland probably hasn't, you know, has either chosen in or not to have chosen to update the parking standards, but in Ashland, it's nineteen by, it's ten, excuse me, it's ten by twenty.
And, and, would, you know, the, the parking spaces are for the pickup trucks and the cars, you know, we're not, they aren't built for large trucks. And even an oversized pickup truck, if you look at what's behind buildings two and three and the parking spaces there, it's open pavement, so even if there arguably was an extra foot beyond eighteen, there's still a lot more room behind it.
Got it.
And is there anything with the making them compact right there, is that, what's the deal with com, I see compact car parking spaces everywhere.
I'd say that's a, that's a trend, you know, obviously, you know, you can kind of waive, you know, make a compact space, you know, eight by sixteen.
Whether this is an open parking lot, I don't think I'd want to get into that.
Yeah.
Going less than eighteen.
No, I think I, you know, having a compact, I think plenty of people are going to have a different conversation about that at a different time, but.
Throwing that out there because I see that a lot, there's a lot of places with compact spots, so maybe if those spots were smaller, no, the ones are the same size indeed.
A couple other things that, with this project, that when, when we first saw it, that I was thinking, in order to get my vote, you need to bring down the height of building one and building two, you've done that. You need to make building one look good for people driving down West Union Street, and.
Resident.
That, it, it looks a lot better. I'm still digesting it a bit, but I, I think you're at least on the right track there. I'm concerned about that crazy staircase on that very last unit.
Yep. And again, that's the residential, so if it was, the decision was, we can do it, we don't have to do it, if we didn't do it, then we don't need that staircase because it's all inside.
I kind of like having that residential unit there.
Yep.
But, you know, that's, um, you know, I, I will have to, you know, if you come up with something cleverer, that would be great, I don't know.
And then you were also mentioned a couple times, the less asphalt, so if, back to the eighteen foot, you said you would be able to add more.
Yeah, one of, one of the good thoughts, I think we add.
Because if we did do a waiver, they could add.
Well, you could keep the same edge of pavement here, but you get eight feet, so you could make this much more of a, a better island and a. Well, you could keep the same edge of pavement here, but you get eight feet, so you could make this much more of a, a better island and a walkway through it. We already talked about, you know, adding the conduit for the electrical, so you could have the electric cars over there. But you could really dress up that space with another eight feet as one nice.
Do a little bit less asphalt.
And that is not parking for the, the more.
That's more for this.
Yeah, that's, that's really, really for Building One, and so I don't think we need the, I, I would think that was reasonable myself.
Yeah, I would too, but, but just because they're gonna be drawing the plans, and if they get that waiver, that would change the plan, and they'd have to draw another one. So it's something to think about anyway. Get a little bit less asphalt.
One other item of concern that I have is that the big sign that's been put out there that's designed to be the, the street sign for.
Standard sign?
For, for the, both Building One and the existing building. I know a number of people complained about that as residents, saying they don't like the looks of it. And I, I don't believe it was part of the site plan review for Building One. I thought, I think it was just.
We, we didn't have a sign designed at that, and, and I haven't been involved in the, what has transpired and what's up there, so.
Yeah.
You're right. They, I mean, he just brought it up to me out there, and I said, well, yeah, the sign's already there.
Right.
And he said, take a picture, and I said, boy, I hope they got a permit.
No, I, I, I think you went and got a building permit for it. But I don't think it was part of the site plan review.
No, we, we did not show a sign as part of the site plan review. And our deal with them was they were supposed to do the design that we were supposed to sign off of it as well. Apparently, we haven't seen it either.
No, 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 no. We saw, to be clear, we saw it, but that doesn't mean that we were responsible to communicate with them.
Right.
And get it, that's.
Right. So, but, I'm saying, an issue for me is the aesthetics of that sign. And we may need to replace it with a different sign that is, that looks better. I, I know a lot of people, and, a lot of times when we talk about signs, the internally lit signs are often frowned upon. People often are much more favorable of having like the gooseneck lighting shining on the signs from above or spots from the ground.
Yep.
I am not an expert on sign design by any means, but I think we will need to look at, at that sign. In order.
Who got the permit? Is that the storage place? So that's their sign, so we would have to deal with them?
Well, it's, we, it's part of the overall thing.
Project, yeah.
And, and I, I think if we can, as a part of this, get a sign that looks good from the streetscape.
It's gonna help a lot.
That'll help a lot and improve this significantly.
I think there was, I think there was some condition in the site plan that says, when it was developed, I think it had to come back, but I'm not certain.
That, that, I'm quite certain that that sign was never approved by the planning board.
Right.
That, I think it only went through the building inspector and, and that I, I think.
Yeah, it was not approved at the time the site plan was approved, no doubt about it.
Reevaluate that as part of this permit, is what I'm saying.
Yep.
That's my sense of where we are in this. But I think you've done a great job of bringing down the building heights and making Building One look a lot better. I think if Tricia wants to see renderings of the buildings with the other buildings around it for reference, to get a better mental picture of what's going on, then if you want her vote, then that's what you're gonna need to do.
I talked with our engineer, and we actually did that last fall, so he has it in the program. So we already have the Ferris's house.
And it shouldn't be a big deal.
So he can, he, he already said he can do that, so that's no problem. And back to that sign issue, I'll get in touch with Peter and agree to find out what happened, what got permitted, where we're at, and then work that out.
I'm not as concerned about what happened.
Yeah.
I, I'm more concerned about what can we do going forward to make, so the, when this is all done, we have a nice-looking sign that people aren't complaining about.
Yep. I'll just say, you know, they were responsible for getting that part done.
Yeah.
So I will talk to them, and they're probably gonna have their own position that they'll address to Peter. But I understand what you're saying as far as if you want it to look nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Just while we're on the topic of signs, you know, I, I echo the comments about Building One. I, this has come a long, long way. I thank you for your efforts to listen to design review and to get this where it is. It's, it's a, it's a much, much, much better-looking product. So thank you for that. Like, my comments on the signs, just going, just flipping through this, I'm, you know, I, I don't know about the signs on, on the faces of the building here. Like, I understand that businesses are gonna need signs. I just, I don't know that I have the answer. I just don't, like, I get a directory, you know, at a main entrance, okay? You know, unit this, unit that, like, but if, if we're thinking like large square signs outside multiple units, I don't know. Is there a better way to do that on the eve or something? I, I don't have the answer for you, but I, I struggle a little bit with how it's conveyed here. Just giving you a reaction to that, like the.
And also the type of sign, if they're really nice looking.
Doing, doing it, doing it on the eve over with a gooseneck or something would probably be, be better.
Yeah, well, I think we, we would wanna specify that these are not internally lit signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think part of that problem, you can see, there's not a lot of room. Everybody wanted the bigger windows.
Yep.
So you typically don't have a sign, you know, eight, seven feet, you know, which only then leaves a space in between the windows.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm just saying, let's try to work it together and see if there's a.
And again, I, I didn't look at the nature of what your bylaw allows, but, you know, it would certainly have to fit within that. And, and, you know, for commercial space in there, I'm sure they're gonna wanna, you know, reasonable-looking sign and, you know.
Not just a metal box.
Not neon and not flashing, and, you know, you want it tastefully done.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's all. I think that's all we're looking for, yep, just tastefully done.
I mean, I would encourage you, if you haven't done it already, to go get, to, to get the copy, I assume you have it already, of the design review document. Right? Design Review Guidelines, Town of Ashland, 2015. It's like a seventy-seven-page document, right? It's illustrated. Because I think, I mean, the residential component has come a long way. You look at that building and you say, there are apartments up there, like your condos or whatever. You get that that's residential. The, the, it's the, now the commercial is the weaker part of the design, right? I think the, when you start to look at the, the proportion of the, the lights, you know, the, the muttons in the windows relative to the, relative to the residences, it's, it's not, it, it's, it's not what it should be, right? There's a disconnect there, and so the design, there might be, there might not be any mutton in, in, in those lights, right? It's kind of going through that design process. What does the, what does the retail look like? What does the residential look like? How do they talk to each other? I mean, there's two different sizes of double-hung windows in there, right? So right away, I noticed that the light size, the mountain size are, are different. So I said to myself, why did they, why did they use two different sizes of windows, right? Is that the best solution for this thing? You know, to go through that kind of, it's the next layer of the process, to take another look at it. So I strongly encourage you to look at these things, to look at it and see, okay, what is it trying to tell me about, about windows? What's it trying to tell me about signage, about, about retail windows, about, because it's all been studied and documented before about how, you know, kind of a, not this, not that this is the only way to do it. Absolutely not, you know? But it's a, it's a, it's like, if you're stuck, look here to find some answers, right, to, to help build that, that character of it. But, but, so it's, it's a really big step in the right direction. I mean, I'm, I'm encouraged, you know?
So, again, we've gotta make some changes. I think, not speaking on a turn, I think we're here in consensus to look at the eighteen-foot spaces, not worry about the loading docks between Building One and Two. We'll change it. We'll create some more green space within the whole thing as a result of those efforts. We'll get the, the, the building spatial plan done and all those items and come back to you whenever at your next meeting. Again, we meet with the design review group again to see what other comments they may have next Thursday.
Do you have any kind of a floor plan yet for any of these?
We, we got those. We can get those to you. Yep. Get those to you tomorrow.
I think on that, which building is this to, what, two or three? The big shed. I think, I think the thing is that you're trying to, it's, it's about getting rid of the big shed, you know?
You're saying that because.
What are you doing? Well, I mean, or maybe it's the shed, maybe it's the size. Well, maybe it's the size of the shed. Like, right now, the shed goes way up to the peak, right, way up to the ridge. Like, does it? It's, I mean, it's getting pretty flat. I understand that, like, you know, but, because it's just, it's that kind of detailing that's the wrong scale. It's the right scale for a resident, that, you know, to have a shed and to have a gable done all the time, drive around, you see it done a million times. It's, it's not the right scale for this building, right? It's not working on this building because the building's the wrong scale. It's the wrong shape. It's not meant to do this, right? So it's about how do we use that and, and change it so that maybe it will work on this building? You know, maybe those dormers don't, maybe, maybe these sheds don't go all the way back to the, to the outside wall. Maybe they're pushed back in here somehow, and they don't go all the way up to the ridge, so not the shed is now smaller and looks better on the rest of the building, right? So that's the play of how do we get these forms that aren't cookie cutter. It's just, it's just a tool. And how do we get the tool to work for this odd building, one that works, you know, the, the gables work very easily there. Here, it's like, ugh, it's hard. They don't wanna work so well because that's not what this building is. So that, so how do we start to play with the tools to get the tools to work for an atypical building? So.
I hear you, but I'm not a designer, so it doesn't mean a lot to me.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment at this time? Mark?
Good evening. Mark DeSoney. It's, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be real short because a lot of things have been said and a lot of compromising has been going around here. The parking spaces, standard, eighteen, um, ten by twenty, it was said. And the radius for turn-ins, and that's, I went past the side and saw that sign myself. Yeah, this kinda sticks out. Red has a title on top. But right down the road on the S, like, going past the railroad, the T Road, where Moody's Glasses is, would be a better sign with the businesses, it's gonna be the commercial bottom. I'd like, that would a little bit better. That, that's a, that's a small thing. And to have the height be brought down, that's a great thing to happen because you help everybody else in the area and you help the bylaw out at the same time. And to understand overall what's been said, what's been said, what's been called, what's been talked about between committees. Granted, I haven't been to the design committee, but I, I live by the bylaws. And I think the bylaws should be incorporated with the design review committee. Other than that, I think we're going, you guys are going in the right directions, and it seems more casual instead of animalistic like it has been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Ferris, seventy-three West Union Street. First of all, my wife and I'd like to thank the planning board for all the effort and time you've put into this. And we thoroughly agree about that ugly sign. Look out my house and I see that. I'd like to go with a sledgehammer and take it down. The one thing I wanna ask about, a year ago, the design review board suggested a shadow study be done on the buildings abutting our property. And I was wondering if that's been done? Because we're concerned about the sun being blocked out of our yard. And that's our, our concern, and I appreciate the lowering of the buildings. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think a shadow study has been submitted, to my knowledge, I would say, concerning this property.
Real quick question. Is any of this.
We, we have not done a shadow study. There's no requirements in your bylaw relating to shadows and how they affect or not, but this is, if you go on a website, you can put in the town's longitude and latitude. The height of the building, the whole deal. And this shows you that from the viewpoint of a forty-foot-high building, and understand, one-twenty-six runs east to west, so for half the day, the shadow is on our property because the sun's rising from the east setting out that way. So it's afternoon time that the shadow starts extending towards the Ferris's property and the other properties. And as you can see from the site plan, the Ferris is the only one that is next to any building. There's no buildings that way. So this, when you put in the longitude and everything else, this takes it, and if you look at the timeframes after noon time, when it starts shifting back shadow to the east, the worst case is, you know, five o'clock at night, it's thirty-one feet on a forty-foot building. So we're already ten feet off. It basically just gets to his building at five o'clock. The rest of the day, it's not there. So after five o'clock, the sun's going down anyway. So the daytime is not affecting the building.
Emery Bond, fifty-nine West Union Street. So that's great. You can plug it into a website and you see forty feet for a generic building. We're talking about a site-specific house, a specific location that has two buildings. There's a new building to the east and there's a new building to the north. So does that, I'm not, I'm super unfamiliar with this website. I'm not sure if it calculates that. Can you do two buildings? I'm thinking that's why the Ferris would like the shadow study to model the as-built condition. These plans don't have their, their plot of house or dwelling on there, so, yeah, it's ten feet away. How do you know? The house isn't portrayed in any of these properties. And the, the board member who suggested that these be rendered from a streetscape, I understood it. I get it. I think it's a great idea.
Well, I thi- I think the thing is that you can, I mean, in the program, in chief architect, in the program that they're using, I mean, you can model the sh- the shadows. You can put those houses in as blocks and, and you can model. But that, that being said, I, I, I think, I, I think it's correct that there's, there's nothing in our bylaws saying that you can't put shadows anywhere you want. In New York, that's a big deal, and then it's very carefully monitored and regulated. That's why you get such strange-shaped buildings in New York. But I don't think it's here. So is it, is it a nice gesture toward the neighbors? Yeah, yeah, it is. But is it part of the bylaws? I, I don't think so. Not, not anywhere that I've read. That'd be pretty, that would be pretty extraordinary for a community this size to have a shadow study.
And a building to the north isn't gonna cast a shadow unless you're in the southern hemisphere.
Sure. And then at the last planning board meeting, I requested a detail of the boulder wall behind Building Three and its relationship to building, to, to my property line along fifty-nine West Union Street. I know a bunch of plans have been submitted today. I've not had a chance to review those. I'm not sure if that detail has been in there.
The detail has been in the plan for the last month. This is a blow-up of it.
I've, I've seen the detail. It's, it's more in relation to the.
Well, I meant detail, a cross-section. So if I can explain, this is Building Two. This is the residential side of Building Two. This is the back. That's the property line. That's the fence. That's the back of the Ferris's house. So that's the perspective.
He's at by Building Three, I think.
Yeah, I'm just going through this plan. So this is the cross-section through Building Three, again, looking kinda from East Union, West Union Street up into the building. As we've talked about, you're, you're sunk in by five or six feet. So this is the height that comes in there that levels off, the fence, the trees, that's the property here. There's no building over here behind that building. The other details in the plan, which again have been there for a long period of time, some place show the retaining wall and the plantings above it.
Can you just, that, I don't see that, that one, nope, the last one, that one, no, you're just going to.
This is a blow-up. You, if you look through the plans, you'll see a, a sheet with, with smaller sections. We just blew it out for tonight.
Okay. I did see somewhere in here, yeah, the, the border wall, this, that's what you're referring to?
It's on Sheet Four. Sheet Four, section.
I've seen the detail. My, my question is, I, I have a five-foot diameter. I've seen the detail. My, my question is, I, I have a five-foot diameter oak tree that is right on the property line, and, and as the applicant's attorney just said, we're cutting down six feet right next to that. It's with, well within the tree canopy of this five-foot diameter tree. I'm, I'm just curious on how that's going to impact that tree. You're cutting down directly at the property line with a boulder wall and compromising the drip line of this tree, where it's, it's a hundred-foot-tall oak tree that's five foot in diameter, a hundred years old. I'm, I'm confused on how that, that's why I requested the detail. I've seen these typical details, but it didn't specifically address how this tree is going to be addressed.
Yeah, go to the microphone.
So, I'm just wondering, that, that, can I see that tree? Okay, this is the tree that you asked me to cut down, right?
I didn't ask you to cut any trees down.
Yeah, okay. So, you asked me to cut this tree down. That's the only comment I have.
The regulations, now, this is a question I generally do not have the answer to, but in property disputes between two neighbors, there's a tree growing on the property line that obviously has, maybe it's on one property line, has its branches going over the other property line.
The roots on the other property line?
Yeah. So, what, how, what governs that? What are, what are the rules? Like, property line goes up into the air and down into the ground and, or, like, I, I really don't know.
Because it can be convoluted, I try to stay out of the matter. A hundred and ten percent, you know.
Tree issue. It's vague.
Well, you cut the tree.
Absolutely cut trees that hang over your property line. It's an issue of safety.
It's, it's.
And that, and that's a, that's a personal private matter. It's not a zoning question.
Let me just finish, please. It is, it's a, it's a private property matter between the two ownerships. I do not believe our zoning bylaws cover the shared tree on a property line. That's why I would never promote the planting of a tree along a property line, because trees grow, and over time, they expand. And, you know, we, we deal with this, you know, we deal with this issue on many cases. When a tree becomes, I would say, sick or ill or diseased, and there is a opportunity that tree is falling, is going to fall down, there is a legal avenue that one neighbor can, you know, grant, you know, submit a letter of, you know, citing a, I would say citing a.
Safety issue.
A safety issue to their property, and they're, they're therefore on notice. I don't know any, I don't know any communication that has happened surrounding this, this tree, and nor does the, the site plans, to my best knowledge, locate the tree on the site.
All right. So, somebody grab my photo that has my notes on it, because tree is on.
There's one here, yeah.
I think we would, I think at the end, I think we need to look into this matter.
And it's been surveyed, and it's right on the line?
Yeah, the tree's on the existing condition. Plans on Sheet Two of eleven dated six thirteen nineteen.
Six thirteen.
But if, but if the applicant will cut the tree down, I'm fine with that. If he wants to take it and pull the stump, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Then that solves the problem, then, right?
But.
He just said that he was concerned about the tree, and he talked about the structure, the roots and all that. Now, he's admitted that he basically just wants to be about the tree.
But that's where we're at now, so.
Again, I think it's a personal matter between the parties. We'll deal with it one way or another.
Yeah, I, I, just sorry, but these plans are, the plan, the, the planned date on this is, is was created, the planned date is June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. However, I do not have a revision date of six.
I was able to just view it on the town's website, sitting in the gallery, so.
That could have been the last, previous sub-site plan. I'll take a look at it, and I'm more than happy to look into it further than that.
The planning board also saw, when they did the site walk as well.
I think we can look into it as, as another matter. Obviously, this will be continued tonight, so.
I think it sounded to me like he was concerned about if you're going to cut your half off and leave the tree there to fall over or something, not, not whether he didn't, he wanted to save the tree, but he just didn't want it to be whacked off on your side and then something happened.
And second question, is there going to be any stockpiling of material on site? I know we talked about this was going to be excavation and filling, but is the plan to stockpile and store any material on site?
I think that would be addressed to the applicant.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we've gotten into the issues, the construction issues yet. We're going to have to have a good discussion on that. I think particularly with the issues that we've had with the previous phase, we're going to have some fairly strict rules on that and oversight.
Was that about construction, or was that about tenants that might?
During construction, if they're going to be digging down, producing material, excavating for stormwater management systems, if they're going to be producing and stockpiling material on site, or if it's going in trucks, like, and leaving directly to the site. I'm not familiar with if it's a balanced site, if they need to bring in material. I'm not, I don't do that. So, I'm just curious if it, if there's going to be stockpiles like there have been before.
I, I think that, that question needs to be answered by the applicant.
So, we addressed this the last time, and we talked about the cut and that there would be excess material, including rock, um, subsoil, loam. It's not a balanced site, so there will be export, and there will be a similar operation, albeit with water, that, that we now have on site to mitigate any type of dust. So, the answer is there will be some stockpiles there, and I'm imagining we're going to have a lengthy discussion on how that exactly is going to happen.
I think, I think that discussion is not ripe yet, but we can, we can have that at the proper time.
And then, my last question is, when will these new plans be able to be reviewed? When will they be posted or available for review at Town Hall?
So, typically, the planning board likes to get the plans at least a week prior to the meeting. And so, hopefully, we can get these in Town Hall as soon as possible. So, therefore.
You mean the final plan, or the first one?
Just the stuff that we've been looking at tonight.
The revised plans. And so, so just to give you a heads up, so the planning board receive these plans digitally. I have not received all the plans digitally, but once we get those, we, we put them up to the town website between, you know, twenty-four and forty-eight hours of receiving that plan.
Thank you.
This would be my last question about this. I asked it many times before. What's the future before the draft conditions come out?
And, and what type of, I don't know how to answer that question, Mark. Is that a little bit more specific?
Well, I was, I was here doing the planning board, and it was, what brought, what's bringing this up? It's Joe Barconi's fight. So, I'm looking at it that, from that, in that sense, how many more steps is there left to do? That's my question.
I think that, that depends on the, the plans that are submitted, the revised plans that are submitted. You know, it's, it's tough, Mark, you know, as a town planner, to predict the future and to predict how a public hearing process will play out. Obviously, tonight, we've heard from the planning board that changes have to be made, both, you know, on the site plan and then also within the building designs.
Emery Bond, fifty-nine West Union Street, again. So, looking at the backside of Building Three, there's a sidewalk, a boulder wall, arborvitae, fencing right along the property line. These buildings are very large roofs. Where is this snow going to go when it snows? We get six inches of snow. It showed several egress doors coming out of the building from the commercial element. Are these going to be maintained all the time? You get a little bit of snow. You get the snow blowing off the roof. What's going to keep those egress doors from being blocked?
I would ask the applicant to address that question.
There's doors in the back. They will be covered so that no roof will fall, no snow will fall off of that. Otherwise, it's going to fall off the roof onto the walk. The walk will be maintained as part of the condominium requirements. The buildings are ten feet off the property line, so there's no flow that's going to carry more than ten feet over six-foot-high fences in, in, in trees that are going to grow up over twenty feet. So, there's going to be no snow on adjacent property. Snow that falls on the walk will be maintained. Snow that falls on the land, on the landscape will be basically water for the tree.
I have a real quick question, just because a bunch of people have asked. Is there any affordable units in this?
I'm sorry?
Is, are there going to be any affordable housing units in this plan?
There's no requirement, your bylaw, given everything that we've gone through and the changes that we made, we're not at this stage of the game proposing any of the units being affordable.
I, I think, you know, the planning board can have that discussion. Currently, the town does not have any inclusionary zoning bylaw, nor does this site fall within the Pond Street overlay district, which there is a required affordable unit count, you know.
I just asked because several people have asked me about that.
Yeah, no, that, I think.
So, now they know.
It's not required. However, I think the planning board, you know, in the application, you know, applicant can have that conversation. Obviously, it will affect the S H I number, the shared housing inventory. Ten percent, obviously, is the, the state mandate that each community is striving for. Ashland is currently under the ten percent. I believe we're out, we're in the six percent range. I don't know off the top of my head. I have, I have the sheet in my office, and I can get a clear number for the planning board at the next meeting. But I, I can confirm that the town is under the ten percent. And obviously, with the two thousand and twenty census happening and occurring, the total number of units will change, because it, it is the decennial census, in that shared housing inventory is predicated upon the, the overall decennial count survey of the total number of units within the town.
Yeah, the, the way the affordable housing calculations work is you take the total number of housing units in the town as of, in this case, two thousand and ten, and then you take the total number of affordable units that we have now, and to figure out whether, what our percentage is. And shortly, it's going to be the two thousand and twenty total number of units and the total number. So, so our percentage will drop significantly because of all of the new houses that have been, units have been put in.
I just, and, and also, I mentioned, because there are incentives. I don't know if it helps you any or not, but in there, if you do affordable, we have incentives, right, to, I don't know if any of those will affect this project, but there are some.
Yeah, I think, I think what it comes down to is if a board member is going to say, I'm only going to vote for the special permit if you have one or two affordable units, then, then, you know, we can look at that. But if nobody's going to put their foot down and say, this, this is the priority here, then it's not going to happen.
No, it's not. I was just saying, and there's.
No, it's a great point. You know, I think, you know, we're, we're talking about the town's future here, and, and part of the town's future is affordable housing, you know. The town is always, and is continues to thrive, and all three hundred and fifty-one communities thrive to that ten percent percentile, you know. And so, all towns are going to take, you know, all towns, the fraction changes every ten years when the decennial census comes out, when you're, when the nominators and the denominators within that fraction change. However, you know, it is definitely part of the discussion, is Ashland thrives to reach that goal, I would say, you know. Currently, the town's, you know, the town has, you know, for the last multiple decades, have been trying to build its housing inventory. In the newspapers, in the Boston Globe, you always read about the housing pinch and the shortage of affordable housing units. And so, it's definitely, you know, should be in, in part of this overall discussion.
If I were to push for an affordable unit, I, I think I might be more inclined to look towards the, the Building Two and Three units.
Exactly. It would be more appealing.
Because I think the Building One units are probably the more valuable units. And, you know, the, they're kind of experimental, at least as far as Ashland is concerned, mixing, you know, contractor bays with housing. And.
It's just a note pressing. I understand your, your ideas on that, however, the shit, the, the, the affordable housing is also protected under the shared housing. I mean, I'm sorry, the federal, you know, affordable housing mandates, and, and you can't specifically cite affordable housing in, in one building and, you know, margarine in another. It has to be mixed.
And these are all three different buildings.
Well, if there's one unit, it's going to be in one of the, you know.
Yeah, it has to be commingled, so I don't want to get too down that.
But, true.
Discussion without just the basic, you know, adding that to the conversation.
So, hopefully, with all due respect, you'll consider also the fact that this, this whole set of plans has evolved from what was one thing to now this thing that has residential. And again, not trying to rehash the whole, how did it happen? Why did it happen? All that stuff. You know, I'm sure you can appreciate, most of all, the additional costs and reduction in the potential of the income of this entire endeavor by adding in these different components, vinyl and the roofs and all that stuff. So, just hopefully, you guys will consider that when you contemplate the idea of the affordable housing. That's all.
And I, I just brought it up because I, people have brought it up to me, and it's kind of, I want to.
We, we'd be remiss if we did not discuss it.
I think, I mean, I think obviously, there's a history to this whole site that goes way deeper than when, when I was involved and way, I, I don't know. I catch little snippets of it, and I don't know the whole history. It's probably too complicated even to get caught up at this point. But, starting from a place where, where we are now, I, I think what it's about, it's to be the most productive. It's about how do we work collaboratively? I mean, architects and contractors used to be beating each other up all the time, and the best projects come out when we work collaboratively to find the right solution. I think that's, I think that's what's here, too. Like, how can we be kind? How can we be, you know, how can you be kind to the neighbors? How can you add more green space? How can you, you know, what can be done to show that give, you know, in order to have some give given back, right? It's a give and take, and I think that's where, you know, I think that's where projects become successful, when people realize that you're giving up something in, in this process by, by having to switch the, the use of these, you know. We're giving up something by, you know, having the storage facility that, you know, that's there now that we have to deal with, right? So, there's, there's this give and take that has to be found in order to, in order for these projects to move forward successfully, where everyone feels, you know, ninety percent happy with it, you know. No one's going to get to a hundred percent. It just doesn't work that way. So, but for us all to get there where we feel pretty good about it. And I think that's the, I think I said that in a previous meeting, and I, I still believe that that's true. And I always believe that there's a solution in there somewhere. There always is. It's finding it.
Mark, quickly?
Okay, quickly. And thank you. That's called a two-way street. We're going to compromise to agree somewhere in the middle to work together. And what she says was talking about, unless there's the difference, you just talked about mixed-use residential with maybe the affordable housing, maybe. But that's mixed-use residential, what you guys have been talking about.
All right. So, as Mark asked, what is the plan going forward? I think we've reached about as far as we're going to reach tonight. We've got a, a number of things we've talked about as far as, I, I, I didn't hear anybody on the board disagreeing with me on eighteen feet and not needing the loading dock.
I think more, less asks.
I don't know if anybody is saying they need more time to consider that. Okay.
And would that be like nine by eighteens or ten by eighteen?
They're still saying ten, ten by eighteen. So, you know, we still have the wider spots, fewer door dings. You know, that's nice. But, but, and then, you want the, the renderings that show the surrounding buildings?
Yeah, I think, I think that's part of going back to the design review. It's on the design review committee list, and I think that's where it should be taken a look at it for the first time.
And the, and floor plans and how the commercial's going to be divided up or can be modified and divided.
And right now, when you want a commercial, we just put it into quadrants.
Oh, yeah.
That'll change depending upon.
You can move the walls around and change it around. But do you have a certain amount of businesses that minimum, maximum type of thing might go in there? One person could, company could rent the whole thing, or?
Then, then they can take out the dividing wall.
But does it make any difference if they divide it up into eight different things? Does that make any difference with parking or any of that, or is it just the space?
Yeah, it's the square footage.
Okay.
It's just a square footage.
Same calculation.
We had been talking about for our, two weeks from tonight, meeting to be a, a working meeting on zoning and internal projects. I know they have a number of things to do. Would it be all right to come back on? I know they have a number of things to do, would it be alright to come back on, I believe, Thursday, March twelfth, if my math is right on the calendar?
So the next, the the two meetings, uh, the next meeting, yes, the two meeting, the next meeting after the the following working meeting. If we do a working meeting on zoning, will be March twelfth and then March twenty sixth, yes, so.
I'm actually on vacation on the twelfth, I mean, it from the viewpoint of the site plans, we will have the site plan change that we're talking about now. To you before a week from your meeting in two weeks, so that will be more beneficial to us.
What's the site, what site plan change?
The proposal, the proposal on the uh, well, obviously, first, the site plan changes I need to take place regarding the uh. Comments from our third-party review engineer, G C G, which has to be incorporated, and then also the site plan changes regarding the parking space changes.
And then.
For plans, you know, those all things need to be. That's our site plan. But the the applicant is is scheduled to go into the desire review committee on the twentieth. Of of next week.
So if you came back, you would have like a floor plan and a.
We're gonna get your floor plans tomorrow, so you you give us comments on those. I would assume the design review board after the reading on twentieth will get you whatever remaining comments they have.
And then the adjacent buildings.
We'll be back to them next week.
All that, so, I'm just saying, so, as much as you could get, like, we don't wanna come back in the next meeting and then, well, there's a few things we still need. So you could have all that stuff by.
Wrap things up, if you have to have a meeting on the twelfth, there's not a lot that, not a lot that I'm not around, won't be able to do.
I think the point for the site, the the plans, the building plans, isn't about how well the building plans are working. Cause I don't think that really has much to do with the planning board, but how the plans, understanding how the plans are working help us to understand what the outside looks like. Right, like, some of these windows, I have no idea where they are, what they're doing, or why they're spaced the way they are, and so without understanding what's going on, I don't know if they. Like, yeah, well, that's the best way to do it, or that doesn't make any sense at all, so it's the understanding of the outside by seeing the inside, so and not.
You already have the floor plans on. Alright, so the windows are where they're added in the floor plan, they're not just drawn on for the outside, okay?
As far as the consultants we do, my understanding is it's the issue of the fire truck getting in. We remove the uh spaces that the chief asked for for building one, and we fixed the radius so the two, if one's coming in and one's leaving, they don't hit each other. And then the issue of the water main was also addressed with T P W the last time in the fall, and it's the same issue. And was readdressed with my meeting with the chief, captain, and Dan Mauer from Water. And at that time, he said he had no problem with the way the water main was done, and reiterated that again in a conversation today. So I don't know if there's another issue there, am I missing something?
I don't know, I I I I don't know why I wasn't invited to that meeting, uh, because I'm the the dealing with this plan first off. However, uh, yes, I I would like to be, you know, included on those meetings, just so I'm abreast of all the information, but I I'm not gonna. I'm gonna need to take the word of the the fire department and the water department on that, so, Dan Mauer and I can obviously communicate. Uh, and and whatever emails, you know, I I would need to see before I, you know, comment on on any comments, so.
I just was there, actually went to meet them to talk about occupancy of building one and the fire hydrants, and then when I went in, Dan was there.
No, I I I didn't see on that, but I I'm not gonna comment on a comment that you are commenting on.
Makes sense.
Something from the sci-fi episode, whack away, it makes sense.
I think there's also looking into the sign that's on this this shared parcel or shared element as well, there was kinda tails on that.
Some information on that and maybe a design.
Yeah, I I don't think we care about the history, we we care about what we can have going forward.
The sooner that's addressed, the better, so I think in two weeks, we're better off having that discussion.
So if we do uh schedule this in two weeks, um, then we could, we could do this, and then we could um. Have, uh, you know, a working session afterwards.
Just have this on the agenda.
So just have this and a working session on zoning issues. Alright, so, so then we would, um, I would entertain a motion to continue this until seven fifteen P M. Uh, two weeks from tonight.
So move.
All in favor? And opposed, that carries four zero. I didn't mention the date, I mentioned how to calculate when it was because I didn't wanna say the wrong date.
Thursday, the twenty seventh.
Thursday, the twenty seventh, okay. Alright.
We have to bring back the sighting samples.
So what do we have left tonight?
That's way further.
We have um discussion of planning board fees, bylaw amendments discussion, uh, minutes from January ninth. Administrative matters and uh reports.
So just as a discussion to the town, uh, to the the planning board fees. I know we kinda went over this a couple times concerning the co-urbanize and how we are moving, we moved off of co-urbanize, and so therefore we. We removed the co-urbanize from our uh fee schedule. Uh, Emma and really Emma, uh, looking through the files, um, we found documentation that dates from January twenty ninth of two thousand and nineteen. This is prior to my arrival, where the planning board did reset the fee schedule. Uh, and within the fee schedule, it says, in summary, the proposed changes include increase to the site plan review by twenty five dollars. To accommodate the cost of a butter notification mailing, increase the special permit, the subdivision fee by a hundred dollars. To cover the legal advertisements and mailings, if possible. Uh, propose new fee including four hundred dollars for special permit modifications. Uh, waivable by the board's discretion if changed, changes are deemed minor, and fifty dollars for the design review to cover the cost of the mailings. So in looking at this, I believe you as the planning board just relooked at the fee schedule.
The prior planner, one of her, one of the final things she dealt with was, we 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 had some discussions about that in twenty eighteen, the last couple of meetings. And then she left either at the end of December and this was like, we dealt with it on in January, just like pushing it over the line, that's my recollection.
Okay, so.
That's how I remember it as well.
So i- it's really kinda, the co-urbanize fee, when you look at it, it was.
Preston, I'm sorry, shall we open this door? That's fine, okay.
So the co-urbanize fee, it cuts it into four separate parcel, I mean, four sep- separate items, small, medium, large and very large. And it ranges from six hundred dollars to three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Obviously, removing that, um, really lessened, you know, reduces the fee from any application. By a minimum of six hundred dollars. Since the board did increase the fees already, I would say a little over a year ago. Um, I would leave it up for discussion, uh, I know I've been talking about the fee schedules, you know. Was would the board be inclined to reach back, you know, within a si- within, you know, I would say the same calendar year to readdress the fee schedule? And increase the fee schedule because we're removing the co-urbanize, or just keep the ski- the fee schedule as printed? Uh, and just move forward with with the process of the applications.
My perspective is that the fees are not designed, they 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 shouldn't be a profit center for the town. At the same time, the costs associated uh with these projects shouldn't be a burden for the town.
Correct.
So, you know, when you look at the the costs associated with a project, a lot of them are kind of indirect. And, you know, it costs a fair amount of money for the two of you to be here tonight.
Sure.
And so that's mostly on uh eighty-one West Union, if we were to do the amortizing. A little bit on, you know, four thirty-three and, um, uh, you know, I don't know if we pay for, I I think. Waka does this out of their own budget, so I don't think we're paying for that. You know, there's heat and utilities on lights on the building at night, there's all of the stuff you do in the office and preparing for this. There there's a lot of work that goes into it, um, so, you know, I I don't know what the right numbers are. And I don't think we sitting on the board are really all that qualified to say what the right numbers are, I think you and the office.
Okay.
Looking at the fees that come in, the budget that's spent, get some idea of, you know. You know, we we should have a a slight net loss because some of the things you do in the office aren't tied to specific projects.
Sure.
You know, um.
Yeah, like what, like, I I agree with Preston, I think you got, I think you, Peter, have more context on fees. Um, for a town the size of Ashland, for the nature, the types of projects that we have, like, I I I mean, Preston's boat where our, like, tell us. What you think is appropriate and customary for a town of our size, and if you, if your professional recommendation is like, hey, I think these fees make sense for us. With, you know, I agree with Preston, we're about covering costs.
I think I gotta continue to look into it, yeah, so I think I think we did make the right move, we cut out the co-urbanize fee for the time being. Using the town website, we did not have to buy any nor- more technology packages, quote-unquote, to implement. Uh, and or to upload the documents onto the planning board website.
Are there any restrictions on that, like, how much you can download and upload or it costs more if you do this and that?
Within the town's, I would say, subscription, a subscription to the to the to the website.
Hosting stuff.
Hosting.
But there's time involved.
There is time involved, however, there was also time involved to the co-urbanize, and the co-urbanize really went to, I would say, co-urbanize.
Yeah.
You know, it did not, you know, even though it was town employee time, those payments were to co-urbanize. Uh, within a separate contract and or payment to co-urbanize, uh, and so I don't believe that, you know, I I think. The crux of it is, I'll continue to look at the fees in, you know, operation within the office, maybe for the next three months, and then I'll I'll bring this back up to the board. At appropriate time, does that make, I think that probably makes the most sense moving forward.
So, so if you determine that we need to raise fees to cover the costs associated with handling permits. Then uh come to the board with a proposal and we'll review it, and if we think it makes sense, we'll schedule the public hearing. And approve the new fee schedule.
Okay.
Or if you think it makes sense to have somewhat, it's some kind of a fee for posting all that stuff, it's only on certain jobs, right?
Uh, for co-urbanize?
Yeah.
No, it was on every job.
Every single one?
Yeah, so just the type of building, um, it was not on, so it really, a small was from zero to. Twenty-five thousand square feet, that was six hundred dollars, then meat.
Any permits?
Correct.
Someone's adding an addition on their house after posting.
No, 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 no.
Site plan review.
Oh, I'm sorry, so it was, so curb- co-urbanize was was really implemented for site plan review. Site plan review pertaining to a number of uses, uh, special permits. And then the planning board determined whether co-urbanize was required, and then co-urbanize was also necessary for subdivision. Permits, including clusters, obviously, that's a subdivision of, I would say, in normal subdivision, probably seven, you know, s- I would say, probably. Greater than five lots, uh, comprehensive permits, also known as forty Bs, and then addis- additional. Uh, customizations as the board saw fit, so, I would say. Mostly all, I would say ninety-nine percent, ninety percent of permits that the planning board granted co-urbanize was attached to it. I would say outside of it, there was some special permits that's pertaining to, however, typically, when you're going through the special permitting process, the site plan review. Process is always kicked in, and so that site, that co-urbanize was also recommended. However, as a as a project's got larger, any very, you know, a very large project would, which would be a hundred and fifty square feet or greater. Which is a fairly big project. I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
I was gonna say.
I'm sorry. Yeah, someone shed, so a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, you're looking at a co-urbanized fee of, you know, four thousand dollars roughly.
That's pretty.
It's significant.
That's a good chunk, I mean, it's a big project, but.
You know.
But also, and that just went to co-urbanize, we didn't. So like I said. Just keep in mind all the different options, and if there was a small fee, maybe not anywhere, you know, that huge, but, like you said, to cover. You got all the extra stuff that goes along with what we're doing. If it makes sense to do that, because then the bigger the project, they chip in more and there's more work and it's it's.
Yeah, no, I I I agree a hundred percent, you know, I think, um, you know, does do you wrap it into site plan? And and try to increase those fees a little bit more, or or the special permit application, you may want, you know, raise from four hundred to five hundred. Which I believe, you know, could be an option, uh, there could be some tweaks made to obviously not increase the revenue, is a revenue generator, however, to. To offset the cost of the office.
And and as usual, if you, when, if we do that, we wanna put in there, this also includes. The, not co-urbanize, but the posting on it, so that people realize that the fee's not just being raised, this is including another service.
Correct, yeah, and and and.
Yeah, do we need to.
Cause people. Keep raising the rates and then.
Uh, raising the fees slightly and including the uh, the mailings, so that that's a change to the fee schedule.
Which was made a year ago.
Oh, we did that, we actually did that here.
Yeah, you did that a year ago, and 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 through our research, we we have confirmed that.
Okay.
I would say that you already made that change, and so I think that's a.
Alright.
That's a, it's a void point, that's a void issue.
So you you meant, you we realize, we list that you're getting more for your money, it's not we're just including the fees, we're, you're getting more services that are included. Rather than paying a bunch of separate fees or something.
Correct, you're you're not, you know, you're writing separate checks, you know, in other towns that I've worked, you would, you know, you would get, pay the fee, you know, special. Permit was, you know, for example, two hundred and fifty dollars, and and then the town would invoice the person.
Yeah.
You know, the cost of the the fee and this, and then you're collecting multiple checks and, you know, it it, this this way is much cleaner.
Yeah.
I agree, but I think it's good that, you know, we have it on, we found it, we, you know, due to the 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 ch- the new. Um, employment within the planning office, we're 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 still kinda getting our bearings, I would say.
Alright, good.
Um, I'm sorry.
Uh, so if we're done with the fees, uh, bylaw amendment discussion?
Obviously, in the next meeting, we'll have a working meeting downstairs and we'll post that, um.
Well, the meeting's gonna start up here.
Start up here.
And then we will.
Whether whether we move downstairs or not, we'll 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 be off camera for for that, it'll be a a much more informal. Uh, working session on uh zoning changes and such.
Okay.
Yep, a couple of things, obviously, we talked about definitions, um, some changes, I know Dale, you spoke about a uh. Preston, I know you were looking at some some non-conforming issues.
Yeah.
Uh, but if there's, and and Trish, you know, reached out to me about, uh.
I wanted to see about having um addition to the bylaw for, when there's a commercial property like these that is bordering a residential property. That that setback should be greater, that maybe that setbacks, I don't know what, it should be twenty feet, because that's that's, at this point in time, that's a residential property. And.
We should, um, anybody who has something that they want to discuss should let Peter know. Uh, so he can construct the agenda and make sure that we actually list all of these separately on the agenda. Because if we just list, uh, you know, zoning change discussion on the agenda, from an open meeting law perspective, that's really insufficient.
Yeah.
Do I need to let you know anything further?
Just email Emma and I, you know, but but I took notes, we took no, I took notes on that. Um, also, just to give everyone a heads up, I know I spoke about it, there's been, um, conversations to include, to implement or or to. Add a tree bylaw to the town's bylaws, which would uh protect and or have, you know, within the site plan review process. The developer would have to show, you know, how many trees over a certain caliper that are on the site and or are being removed. And, you know, what the, you know, how many trees are being replaced, and if there's a, there's a, there's a net loss, there could be a payment in lieu of. Uh, which would be described within a formula within that bylaw, so Emma's been working on that with town council. Um, and a group of citizens, uh, two citizens in particular from the sustainability committee and the town forest committee. And so, uh, hopefully by the next, you know, that meeting, that will, by the next planning board meeting, we'll have that as a, as a, as something for the board to review.
Let's talk about inclusionary zoning.
So just to update you on on another matter, and and if I could, I'll I'll jump, I'll jump to the administrative matters. Um, as a report, so, there's two items, the the planning office back in two thousand and nineteen. Prior to my arrival, received a grant from the planning office, uh, pretty much from the Department of Environmental Executive Affairs, the E O E A. For a planning technical assistant grant to review the downtown zoning. Uh, the grant needs to be, project needs to move forward, um, I reached out to the, our regional planning agency, M A P C. And Metropolitan Area Planning Council to see if they had any interest in working with the town. Um, I reached out to the, our regional planning agency, M A P C, and Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to see if they had any interest in working with the town. Uh, they had more than just interest, but they had some technical assistance funds that were willing to partner with the grant that the town received, uh, from the state. And so M A P C is, is, is gonna kick in, uh, ten thousand dollars to the, to the, to the grant process and to the project. And so now, uh, the town has, you know, thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to spend on a process to review the downtown zoning, uh, so that project will be moving forward. Uh, there'll be nothing ready for the spring town meeting, however, hopefully, you know, they're gonna review the change, I mean, review the current zoning in the downtown area, obviously, and, and then take, take into consideration the plans for the downtown with the, the street renovation and the street redevelopment with the underground and the power lines and the new sidewalks, and really take a look at, in-depth look, and to see, you know, does the zoning fit the downtown and the vision of the downtown, so. M A P C is, you know, we had contracts sent over and, and, so I'm sure the planning board and myself will be working with M A P C to really within that review process of the bylaws. Uh, regarding inclusionary zoning, the town, uh, first off, the town has a housing production plan, which is going to expire in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, so therefore, the town, uh, working with, uh, the housing production, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Trust has applied, uh, for, uh, technical assistance funds from the, uh, M A P C. And also, the Affordable Housing Trust has voted to, uh, put a matching fund amount of thirty thousand dollars to help fund a project that will not only, um, update the affordable housing, uh, housing production plan, but also to develop an inclusionary zoning bylaw for the town of Ashland. So as we update the housing production plan, it's a, it's probably, it's one of the state's best practices to have a housing production plan, uh, for the development of, for affordable housing units. Um, we will go through the research and, and look at the demographic data and also the local, you know, I would say economics of Ashland to develop an inclusionary zoning bylaw that fits the community. And so we have proposed that grant, we're looking to hear back from M A P C, hopefully within the ne- next month or two. But those are the planning op, that's the planning op, that's my, that's our, no pun intended, plan, uh, to not only to update the affordable housing production plan, but to also to develop an inclusionary zoning bylaw.
So are you working with the housing authority now, or housing trust, or Steve Greenberg?
So yes, the, the, the Affordable Ha- the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah.
Uh.
Cause aren't they working on just such a bylaw right now?
So they're, they're work, I'm working with them on this development. Yes, and so, you know, the inclusionary zoning bylaw would morph out of the research and the update of the housing production plan, which is going to look at the demographic data of the town and how's the town changed over the last, you know, five years since the last housing production plan was developed.
Okay.
Uh, and I think it's real, I think this is a good, I think in my, in my opinion, my professional opinion, this is the proper way to go about it. We're not just creating a bylaw out of, you know, uh, attorney, an attorney or council is not just creating a bylaw using, you know, other towns' bylaws as a, as a reference, I think. You know, we will create this inclusionary zoning bylaw from data-driven facts that will be developed and, uh, updated through this planning process, and so, and I believe, and I hope, my hope is to use the planning process to update the housing production plan, to build momentum, to educate the town of Ashland about inclusionary zoning, so when we go to town meeting, we not only have a, we're, we are not only proposing inclusionary zoning, but we're educating the public about housing production within Ashland. And so we're using both processes to build upon each other.
Okay, uh, we have then, uh, member reports and administrate, and, um, the minutes from January ninth. Um, I'm gonna jump in on, uh, one of the member report items that I have, cause it's, I did some research into uh, the zoning for residential on, um, the northern Pond Street area. And I just wanna share with the board what I found, and we'll go into this in a lot more detail at our next meeting. Uh, but I got the data from the assessors, I actually got it for the entire town of, uh, but I only looked at the, um, this, the section, uh, the, the very northern Pond Street section, uh, which is zones residential B, which has a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Uh, there were seventy-three, uh, single-family home lots. Uh, the largest of which was like seventeen thousand something square feet. Uh, the smallest was under four thousand square feet.
Lot sizes?
Lot size.
Wow.
Um, so not a single one of these lots is conforming. Uh, so any, so the rules there is all under the pre-existing non-conforming. I didn't go through and look at what the frontage on these lots, uh, is, the requirement is a hundred and twenty-five feet. I, very few of these lots probably have that. Um, the side setbacks, we'll get Google Maps, uh, some of the houses actually look like they, they not only have, that, that they may have actually negative setback, cause they may actually cross property lines. Um, but Google Maps is not a hundred percent reliable there, but the, the side setbacks on some of these are not the ten feet, probably not even five feet in, in a number of cases. Um, the only thing that, so I, I don't know how to write the right zoning for this, and we'll talk about this more at our next meeting. Uh, but the one thing I did find is that of the seventy-three, uh, lots, um, the square footage of the houses was under two thousand on all except for, I think, five. So if we created new rules, and the only change we made was to say, um, that you can't have more than two thousand square feet, uh, in your house size here, um, almost every existing house would conform, and it would cut down on any temptation of a developer to knock something down and put in a much larger house on this really tiny lot, which currently, uh, there are some cases where they could do that.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something to that, that's real small?
Um, yes, just really quick.
It goes with what you're talking about. Now, what you're looking at, I think, is Village Commerce? Down by, by the, uh, oh, where the, the Donut and the, uh.
No, no, th- this is Res B, which is the very northern part of Pond Street, north of Market Basket. This is like Greenholt and Douglas and.
Oh.
Um, Lakeside, um.
You're talking that square area?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're talking about, um, the short B residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe there's also residential B in, uh, the greater downtown area.
Ye- yes, residential B exists in the greater downtown area.
And I didn't look at any of those, so doing a general residential B change, um, I, I, I don't think that the.
It's more complicated.
It is more complicated, and, and I really think those two, two different areas, which I believe is all that is residential B, they're fairly des- different, so we might wanna change the North Pond Street area from residential B to residential C.
And make some changes.
And make some changes there. I don't know, that, that's kinda what I'm thinking, uh, I just wanted to throw my thoughts out, I haven't actually gone and talked to any of the people who live there, which obviously we shouldn't do before we do anything like this, cause we don't wanna rezone their property in a way that's, they don't like, cause the, the whole point of this is to protect the character of the neighborhood, so we need to, you know, be working with the residents before we, we go too far. The only other thing I wanna mention is, uh, somebody suggested looking at the floor area ratio, uh, which is the way a number of towns do the zoning, and, um, because the lot sizes are uh, very different in size, doing the floor area ratio doesn't really result in the kind of protection of simply a two thousand square foot limit on houses on undersized lots would have. So that's what my thinking is right now, uh, we'll have a lot of time to discuss this next week, and I, I'll bring all the data.
Okay.
So, um, I think now we have the January ninth minutes.
Yeah, I just wanna know, uh, we, Emma and I both apologized, we forgot to add the listed documents to the, to the minutes. However, we both reviewed the minutes, uh, that, that been completed.
Okay.
Sorry. Line twenty, are we, we're looking at the minutes now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On line twenty, is filing decide the, a term? Like, or did I?
Decision.
Okay. I thought maybe it was just a term, I didn't know.
Of the decision, yeah, that was a.
For the, uh, extension, for the filing deadline.
Deadline, yeah, deadline.
Filing deadline, I think works.
Was it, I'll see if I can, put, couldn't we put?
Sorry.
Yeah, good catch.
Do, um, administrative matters, seventy-one through seventy-three, do we need to say that again, we covered that on uh, twenty-three and twenty-four? Eighty-one West Union Continuum? Administrative matters, future meetings, public hearings, Mr. Mastick stated that he, you just, you reiterated it, so you put in the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're doing there?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Probably don't have to have it, but since it's, it's not worth taking out.
Yeah, it's fine.
Oh, I'll say, just give everyone note, I just found a correction on line eighty-six. Now, I'm sorry, yeah, eighty-six, to make it, instead of discuss in-progress construction prog- in-progress construction projects.
Instead of in-flight.
Yeah, in-flight, yeah.
That's good.
In-progress, yeah. Those meetings are going well, we're all getting together and communicating, we had our, is it third? Third or fourth monthly meeting, so we all get together. D P W, Emma, you know, Emma ran the last one due to my absence. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, brings everyone together, so it seems like everyone's getting, you know, getting moving. Uh, I was out, just give, you know, just a, a review. Um, last week I attended a municipal procurement training class. So all concerning, you know, supplies and services, and also procurement of, uh, construction projects. And so I was out with the office, if you did stop by the office, I was out of the office. Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and so I, I'm not a certified purchasing agent.
You now are, you said?
No, no, I, I, there's a couple more training classes, but I went to an overview class. So anything concerning, um, R F Ps, um, quest proposals, um, bid documents, you know, participation, learning about the, you know, the right limit amounts, uh, as projects move forward in town, you know. Uh, the planning office is always involved in them, however, you know, uh, it was more just an overview class of, of, you know, what, what, you know, concerning, you know, O P M services to the town that we have to procure as things move forward, prevailing wage, you know, laws behind prevailing wages and stuff, you know, things of that nature. And I also do wanna note that I'll be out of the office on vacation next week, uh, if anybody swing by, uh.
Is Emma in, in your absence?
Yes, Emma will be here, Emma will be here, and I'm always open, I'm always, uh, I'm available for contact, too, so. I'll, I'll have my phone on me.
Okay. Uh, if there are no further corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth, uh, as corrected uh, with the addition of the documents list?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that passes four zero. Um, any other member reports?
Uh, you had just sent out that email at one point about the training, I think a training coming up.
Oh, yes, the citizen training collaborative.
Citizen training collaborative.
I did, I did go in and put my name on an email list, but if.
Okay.
It doesn't seem to be open yet, the registration, so if anyone hears that it's open, please let me know in case.
So typically, I'm on that email, I'm on, we're on that email list, and so once we do, um, once I do receive uh, notification, I'll, I'll send that out to the board.
Keep checking, but it's not open.
The C T P S, they typically hold, it's always a Saturday, I think, if, it's always the Saturday of St. Patrick's Day weekend. Uh, and it's usually held out at Holy Cross in the conference center. I've been to numerous C T P S conferences, I mean workshops, over the years, I have, however, I've never been to the uh, annual workshop in March, uh, they hold workshops throughout the state in early, in the fall. Uh, but they're always very informative, I would, I would say. And I would also just to cite that the C T P S website is very helpful, cause they do post a lot of their material and their information, um, as, as record, as videos, and they also usually upload their PowerPoints as well to, to follow along, but there's great training about, you know, the process of an A and R, uh, the basics of a subdivision, basics of special permit variances. Um, I always have found them very helpful, um, even as refresher classes, cause there's always things that you forget about, or you, 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 you learn.
I believe the town in the past has offered to, uh, reimburse or, uh, expense, uh, planning board members attending these.
Yeah, a hundred percent, I think, I, you know, I, I agree, I believe that's still true, and, and I would always, I would support any attendance at the C T P S conferences, um, moving forward.
Uh, I have one other item to, uh, report on, uh, it is town election season.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as always, uh, there is one planning board seat up for election. Uh, the planning board seats are for five years, uh, so that there's good continuity. And, um, the, uh, it's actually my seat, and I am not seeking reelection, uh, so the planning board, uh, certainly could use, um, good people to run for the seat, uh, if you are interested in, uh, being a member of the planning board, uh, you need to obtain, uh, fifty signatures of registered voters, which is actually not too hard to do uh, by the end of March, and you have to stop by, uh, town hall, uh, and get the forms from the town clerk. Uh, it's a fairly simple process, um, and other than that, uh, the main, the most important part of campaigning probably is actually the, uh, forum, uh, that they have in the library where the candidates, uh, discuss um, their vision and reasons for running. So I would encourage. So I would encourage anybody who is interested, um, to uh consider that.
Ready?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to ask, um, in general, I wanted to ask about, um. Three or four West Union.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an application that's coming before us with regard to that? This was a home that had a fire, was demolished.
So that application is right now in front of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a plan that that's gonna come before us?
Uh, there's the potential. It depends upon, you know, the zoning, how the zoning board, uh.
Rules?
Rules.
Okay, but given its location on our main street on the Marathon Route.
Mm-hmm.
At a minimum, can we get, to the extent it doesn't come before this board, I think it would make sense for it to go to the um design review committee?
Mm-hmm.
Cause I just think it's, um. It's on, it's on our kinda, our our main street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, it might make sense if if that is within its purview.
Okay, so right now, the application does not trigger the designer review process. Um, and so.
Location doesn't?
I don't, I don't believe so. Uh, and so right now, the use and the proposed use of that property. Uh, is in front of the zoning board of appeals. Um, and so, you know, I wouldn't wanna comment any further on, you know, that process, um. They are applying for a special permit to extend a two-family dwelling, a pre-existing nonconforming two-family dwelling. Into a four-unit dwelling. Um, and they are proposing to build two, two bu- two, excuse me, two duplexes. With a buried uh connecting foundation wall, which is within the, within the, um. It's allowable within the building, uh, codes to have a connecting foundation wall. Uh, and so, uh, Emma and I are at a zoning board of appeals hearing on Tuesday night, and it has been continued to another date, so it. It still is an open case, um, in front of the zoning board of appeals.
Would would that property not, it's not in the downtown district?
No, it's in the commercial, it's in the C N district.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there any circumstance where it comes, it, is it gonna come before us, or we don't know?
We, we don't know yet. I think it depends on the rule, it depends on the, you know, it has a potential to. Uh, it right now is in front of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, yeah. I just, I think it's seen some of the optics, the design, and I just, I think it's, um. I think, you know, I think one thirty-five is our Marathon Corridor. I think it's. I understand it's not in the downtown zone, it's in this other zone, so I get that, but I just, um. I, you know, I'd love to see us not make a mistake on that place, in that spot, if we can help it or if we can shape it or make it better.
Make it look nice.
Yeah, make it, make it look nice, so, um, yeah.
I think, uh, I think with the, the, you know, we're taking it step by step to the appropriate boards. And and the first step is to go through the zoning board of appeals for a ruling on the proposed use.
Got it, okay. So you'll keep us informed to the extent.
I'll keep you a hundred, a hundred percent abreast of any, any, any process, as the process, as the process moves forward.
Right, and then one other item, um, the tree in front of one twenty-eight Main Street. The one that's on that corner there. There, there'd been some, uh, there's some Facebook conversation about that tree. People expressing an interest in that, you know, being saved. I know we've talked about it. Um, the decision had that it was gonna get these wood, the wood barricade around the trunk.
Mm-hmm.
Previously, it was kinda carved out of the fence, so it was outside of like the action. I now see, I think it's tucked inside the fence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are, are we gonna make sure that?
That tree is on my radar.
Got it.
I've been in, I've been in communication, uh, multiple ti- communication multiple times.
Great.
With the uh, with the owner of that property.
Okay.
Concerning that tree.
Yeah.
Uh, that tree is, is going to stay.
Yeah.
Uh, any, any, any proposals to that tree, uh, I have mandated that, uh, I am. Uh, noticed, and uh, and I take the short walk over from town hall to one twenty-eight Main, and I, and I see it for myself.
Okay.
And so that.
Yeah.
Anything, anything regarding that tree is on my, is it within my radar right now.
So I appreciate it. I just, I just wanted to follow up. I know we chatted, but, um, just in lieu of the the public comment.
The developer and I have been in multiple communication, at points of multiple communication concerning that tree.
Awesome, thanks, Peter.
Hmm.
Cool.
Alright, it is nine fifty.
I'm moving, we close this meeting at nine fifty P M.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes four zero. Thank you and good night.